That being noted, the Purview City Council will now be called to order. Certification and form, Ms. Biden?
Councilman Roland?
Present.
Councilman Randall? Councilman Jones? Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Wallace?
Present.
Uh, invocation and pledge. Ms. Biden, you want to do us the honors and make sure credit? Lord, may I ask that you be with us this evening and bless us in all of our undertakings on behalf of all of the folks who did work and study within the city of Purview, who's guided us in all of our actions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real quick, y'all notice this thing broke off?
Item one, discuss and consider possible amendments to the Purview City Charter. Councilman Roland?
Good evening, citizens. Uh, council, mayor. Uh, this was something that we asked to be put on back on the agenda to have a conversation for the community to be put on to, to come and give their input. Um, this meeting, we're supposed to be talking about process. Councilman Wallace, uh, made a motion and some suggestions at the last meeting. So, we're gonna go through, uh, that and I also identify an additional date, uh, for an additional meeting. Um, so with that, um, we can get started. I think we, uh, said that we were going to, if we're gonna go through section by section, so the goal would be to kinda get through that. Um, or section, or I think it was a number, I don't know if he said we're gonna keep it general, which the agenda allows us to do anything, but I think the process, we're gonna go one by one. Um, so, uh, Councilman Wallace, if you wanna start with where you're at.
I have a question before you start.
Yes.
My question is, the citizens who were here last time, we gave you a whole list of inputs, but you said today, the only thing we were gonna do was to go through section by section. And I think that the citizens who were here last time said, if that wasn't necessary, go through section by section.
So, so that's not what I said?
Well, I can play it back for you.
So, again, uh, the agenda item allows us to talk about anything that has to do with charter. What we, Councilman Wallace came up, uh, said he wanted to talk about the process, and so that's what we're gonna do. I said.
But we're not gonna talk about the things that the citizen said. You said it was for citizen input.
Again, yes, we're not, we're not at the input yet, we're just.
You said it was for citizen input.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Alright, um, I'm, I'm a little confused as well, only in that, um, and, and I'm picking up on both of you in a sense, but, for example, incorporation corporate powers, it was, it was pointed out that we need to focus on what's not working. I mean, is the corporate name something? City of Purview, we really need to discuss?
No. So, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're, you're in the weeds already. The only thing that I was saying is for what the deliverables were. And that was to come up with an additional date and to figure out the process moving forward. Councilman Wallace talked about a process, and those are two deliverables. Other than that, the meeting is to go through the charter and continue to have citizens come and give their input. We haven't even got to one yet. I think the only thing, as far as, again, citizens can give their input, we wanna move forward, but all we, we wanna find out what process we're gonna use and what's the next date of the next meeting. Other than that, we say we're gonna go through section by section, and then if it's nothing we need on page one, we go to page two.
Uh, I have a question, since this is a work.
Right, but I'm, but I'm talking.
Yeah, but you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Doc, Doc, one at a time, either one of you. Both of you have disrespected each other?
He cut me off.
I know, I know, I'm telling him too. But if we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna respect each other, or we're not gonna have much of a meeting. So, it goes both ways. Councilman Roland, Dr. Brown, both of you have, whatever your issues are, this ain't the place for them. We're gonna, if, if, if we're gonna go through a date, let's do item one. What, what's the date? Let's get something done. What's the date? What's the next date you looking at?
I had, uh, August. We had August, but I didn't know what other, uh, council was available. I think it was the 10th was the date.
Well, one of, one of the things that came up even from councilmen was that, uh, if we're not rushing to try to do something in November, why July and then?
Could we continue, so the goal is to, we didn't say if it was August, or November, or March, or May, we're just gonna continue to have meetings. And so, we, we, we didn't say we weren't gonna have ten or twenty meetings, but we're, we're saying that we're trying to pick the next meeting to talk about this.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you something, so we can help, I think, in picking a meeting. We've got two options. One is to shoot for a November ballot, the other is to shoot for a May ballot. And I think the meetings should be gauged on what we're talking about. I think Councilman Jones even, even mentioned that. So, let's start there, then we can work backwards and see how quick, how often, uh, we need to meet. What's the pleasure of council, Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, do you know how much it would cost, uh, to move to the general election, or if we had a, um?
Special?
Special election.
Um, I know it's several thousand dollars, specifically, I, I can't say, but, uh, the packaging and mailing is gonna be pretty extensive by itself, but to also set up for the voting and paying those people and renting the machines is those extra costs that we'd be looking at on a special versus doing it in line with a, a May election.
So, he said, uh, said we had to pay for the machines?
Yes, sir. Uh, the machines, personnel, mailings, well, the mailings, we have to pay for anyway. So, it's really, I guess, the, the personnel and, and all of the county stuff would be, yeah.
I think.
Councilman Wallace?
It's the machines, personnel, what else, what else?
Uh, the mailing and stuff is outside of, uh, that's the norm.
Okay, so, what I, what I thought we were gonna begin with as Councilman Roland, what I thought we were gonna begin with as, as Councilman Roland stated was, was kinda the process. So, citizens gave a bold point of things that they feel like would help in the process of, of the charter committee. Or not charter committee, or the city charter in general. And so, I'm going to that page. So, a couple of things they were talking about is like, have a survey of the ci- of the citizens. Uh, of course, like when we had these meet, when we had these meetings, you know, we hear the people that are here, but we haven't wait the survey system. You know, if they're not able to be here, you know, they can still have equal input, so I wanna first touch on that aspect. So, if we did a, a survey of citizens, what would be, um, first, what would be the most efficient method to get out there? Should it be almost like in a, uh, put it in like city hall, and people can come by when they get their water bill? Um, and as they, or as they're paying it, they're gonna, we say, oh, can you come, please fill us out and bring it back, so we can get accurate information? Or in the, oh?
We could send it out with that water bill.
It, it can, it can go out with the water bill, and we can, uh, do the, you know, in the office thing that Councilman Wallace said, we can, we can do both. And we can add the same survey on the, uh, on the city website, you know, and just to really put out and encourage participation. But again, that's, there, there, we're back to the timeline, and we're still looking at possibly a May thing to be able to do that, you know, comfortably without rushing and, and things of that nature. Now, is a survey, what you're suggesting, Councilman Wallace, from the process standpoint?
I think that, that's a good way of getting more input outside of just, just the meeting, 'cause like I said, we can't have a meeting every week due to everyone's schedule. And, but we still wanna have citizens feel like their voice can be heard, um, if they're not able to come to the meeting. So, I think, uh, coming up with a survey is one good way for us to go through that process. The people in the audience, or the citizens, do you agree?
True. Okay, let's, let's go back there, anyone come up? Yes, this man.
Mr. Wallace?
Uh, when we had the last meeting with reference to the charter, there have, there were several unanswered questions. One was, what was the problem with the present charter? The other question was, what are the weaknesses that you see? Now, if those questions cannot be answered, you know, then, this is a waste of our time, even to send out a survey. People are tired of this. Since the council called the meeting, maybe the mayor pro- pro- protested, because he, he opened up by saying he's been trying to do something, and to me, that, that was an allegation. But the problem is, this is, you're gonna have as, as many, if you're gonna say you sent out ten surveys, you're gonna have ten different inputs. May I suggest to you, whatever you see the problem is, this, this is organization. You come to the group with what you observe as a, as a weakness or a problem with the present charter, and then let's vote on that. To get an input from the citizenry is, is a waste of time. I'm too doggone tired to be here this afternoon. And, and, and another thing, excuse me, uh, uh, Mr. President, uh, let me, uh, say this. Uh, for you to come in and take this several-page charter, page by page, for what? We're gonna be right back where we began at the initial meeting. This does not make sense. People, you have something, council, uh, uh, people, you have something before you. Either you see a specific thing, uh, several things that's wrong, and bring that with the group, and let's vote on that. You're just wasting time, you're making alleg- uh, allegations, and it doesn't make sense. If you were a teacher, you can, okay, I wanna know what you sooner wanna learn today. Hades, they don't wanna learn anything, they're just tacos, they're registered for two or three classes. You've got to come with some organization. In a classroom, we have what is called a teacher's plan. What is the council's plan? What do you see that's wrong with the charter? Stop making false alleg- uh, allegations, because you're interjecting personality. If I can't run it, it's not gonna be, and that's the wrong philosophy. We'll never get anywhere, and I'm trying to be all black, we'll never get anywhere as, as a people, as a black people. Because we're gonna get behind the leader, and let, let the leader run the organization. Let the leader run this, uh, council, this makes a, 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 a thing, not council, I'm sorry, the city. It doesn't make sense what you're doing. What's the problem with the present charter? Let's start with that, page by page. The, I know this, we're here in an institution of higher learning, that's our environment, and we are acting like elementary folk. Who in the heck wanna look at page by page? What's wrong with that? Okay, page one, nothing wrong with page one, let's go to page two. What in the heck do you see wrong with page one? What do you see wrong with page two, three, four, five? Do it!
Mr. President, yeah, Janet?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I, I, you know, I, I really think that we need to go page by page on this thing, simply because I'm not an educated person, I've never been to college, and a lot of this stuff y'all talking about is over my head, so, you know, if y'all can help me, I, I'm not one of the educated, you know, people as, I know Purview is full of educated people, but I'm not one of them, so.
Let me, let me ask you this, we could do that. Yeah. You, you probably know the boundaries of the city better than most of us, 'cause you've been here longer. That's on page one. I mean, what, what we're looking at, folks, and, and we heard it a lot last week, in, in summary, is, if, if there's, if there's something wrong with page one, you know, you wanna change it from the city of Purview here and after referred to as the city, then let's address that, but that's not an operational problem. Why can't we go to where we know we have, or you highlighted some issues, and dive right into those instead of A, B, C, one, two, three?
Alright, so, uh.
Yeah, then let me finish with, then we'll back up here, that last one.
Uh, my, I have three points that I'd like to make. The first point that I'd like to make is, I really don't like being disrespected. Anybody in this room can say whatever they wanna say, however long they wanna say it, to wherever they wanna say it, and they're not cut off. But when I start talking, I get cut off, and then I get accused of being disruptive. I don't appreciate that, and that's disrespectful. That's number one. Number two is, on a survey, in order for you to conduct a valid survey, a real survey, to get good information, it has to be reliable, and it has to be valid. It has to be tested for reliability, as well as validity. Now, that's problem number one, which means you go through a process. The process is, you do a sample of a survey, you get feedback, you do an, uh, uh, statistical analysis on there to check the validity of it, to check the reliability of it. Then, out of that, you come out with another survey. This is how you do a correct survey. You don't, don't send out questions and answers and ask people to respond to it. Number two, if you're gonna do a survey, and you mail it out in the water bill, how do you know that those people who are responding are actually registered voters? Are you the citizens of Purview? You've got people who pay water bills who don't live in Purview. This, uh, city charter only applies to voter, really, citizens of Purview, but the only people who are going to be able to respond to it at the polls are registered voters. So, that's another flaw with the survey. Okay, my third point is, if we're going to go section by section, if we have some of the people in the room who wanna go section by section, and some of the citizens in the room who want to identify problems with the, uh, present charter and address those, I think it's only fair and democratic that we take a vote to see how we do it. Because you're imposing an unfair restriction on people who don't wanna go section by section. Well, at the same time, people who say that they are not educated as their reason for not wanting to go section, for wanting to go section by section, it's unfair to those who don't want to do that. So, those are my three comments.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman.
Oh, Councilman Wallace, I'm pretty sure that he had an extensive thing, uh, but one thing that I did take from this meeting is what, the last meeting, um, is what direction in which we're gonna go in, in this meeting. And our request is set that direction, then once we set that direction, it'll have the meeting to be able to flow a little bit easier, so, uh, now I asked who was leading the, the meeting, is it, uh, Councilman Roland or the?
It's, it's, the issue is, I, I brought up the issue, but the mayor is, it's a workshop, so the, um, it, it just depends on, anyway, I, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure that, it's a workshop, so citizens, citizens comment, but we don't, we also wanna, um, we have a time, time was on our side, and so, we, we wanna make sure that we're moving towards the process, so.
Councilman Roland, since the, or, I, I guess, once Ron finished with, I mean, once Councilmember Wallace finished with his plan, could you paint to us the direction in which you want this meeting to go into, due to the fact that there's a, a city councilman Roland, and then after that, we could have some sense of direction and we'll go?
I was gonna do a quick response, I was gonna do a quick response to Dr. Brown, uh, when it comes to the survey, so, the survey idea was just a general concept, it was no specific, uh, tied to the title of it. Um, I've done surveys on multiple levels throughout my bachelor and master's degree, so I understand that you can't just put questions. Of course, when it comes to survey, we have to come to a consensus with people that, you know, that are a part of putting the, uh, or a part of the charter. And then, it'll be sent out, once it's agreed upon, I wouldn't myself, I would myself just put out questions and put it out there. It'll be a very, uh, dignified process, just so that everybody is, is up, up to, is abreast of what's going on. And then, the reason why with the water bill, the reason why is 'cause we, the idea was trying to get a wide array of people, um, within the city of Purview. And so, the reason why we said the water bill was because we know that citizens come up to pay the water bill. So, I mean, either whether we put it in city hall, whether we put it, you know, um, through the water bill, it is that we just wanna get a multitude of answers. The answers, you know, won't be the end-all, be-all, but it just gives us a direction and how the citizens feel.
Well, and, and, and I totally agree with both of you, in a sense. But I'm sitting up here, and I'm reminiscing on what residents shared with us at the last meeting, and the focus on what, whatever it is, I mean, it, it could be the mayor, I'm fine, but whatever, what is the issue? Why, why, we are not here. We went through, and I sat on that commission, going through, putting together a charter. We're talking about going through, reviewing a charter that was voted on by the residents. Whatever's wrong with that charter, whatever your thoughts are about the charter, why can't we focus on those? If somebody, you know, got a concern, but they don't wanna bring it before the body until we get through page four or something? What's? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes, my one comment or concern is, uh, the citizen, many, many of us here at last meet, at the last meeting, and they, they were concerned about the committee, citizen committee that we had talked about. I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, but didn't you have any additional comments about that?
No, that, that's, uh, right now, that's, that's, that's done. You and then.
Done.
So, so this meeting, uh, so again, it's citizens' comment. We wanna go to move the meeting, so we can, it can be productive. We, if we go section, page by page, if there's nothing on the page, then we, it's done. I, I don't know why we keep holding this up, so if we can go, if the citizens have a comment, it's about what we have on the agenda, we're gonna go page by page. If you have a question about that page, then we will stop and, and give input. If there's nothing, then we would move, we're gonna continue to move. So, if we can go to the first page and, and move that way, if anybody has any comments, anybody have anything they wanna put in on that page, but we spent thirty, we spent twenty-five minutes already, and we haven't got to page one. So, Mr. Mayor, um, if we start with section one of the corporate powers, is there anybody who had any concerns? Uh, everyone should have a copy in the back of the city charter. Under section one, corporate powers, under, uh, where, where we're currently at, does anybody have any questions in reference to, um, section one? Anything on that page? We, we only wanna address things on this page?
No.
I have a question.
You proceed.
You got hands up.
Uh, is it, does it have to do with this page?
It has to do, it has to do with corporate power, second one.
Alright, so, we're gonna go with, we're gonna go with the order of the hands. Ms. Sadio has it first, we wanna make sure it's to this page. Yes, this, uh, thank you.
It, it is to the page.
Okay.
And, and I participated in the workshop, uh, the other day.
Yes.
And, uh, we were here for an hour and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I recall, uh, on at least four occasions during the meeting, asking, what's the need, what's the need? And, and there was virtually no response from the council. In fact, at least two people said, well, I can't really think of anything right now. Here is my frustration.
Okay.
When the meeting was over, there were at least three council people in the parking lot who finally discussed the need.
We just, three, three people?
There were at least three. I didn't say you were together.
No, no, okay, so, so we wanna, no, no.
Let me finish.
This is a, this is a meeting, Mr. Mayor.
No, 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 you recognized her, let her finish.
She doesn't get ten minutes.
You, you recognized her, let her finish.
I haven't even had one, sir.
It hasn't been ten minutes. Go ahead.
That's what we go. So, here is the frustration as a citizen.
It has to do with page one, right?
Absolutely, corporate power, sir.
Yes.
Alright. At least one council member said, well, we have complaints that the mayor is too powerful. So, that's the corporate power issue. And I would much rather, and I think there were at least two people, I'm not talking about you, Councilmember Roland, but at least two folks in the parking lot indicated that, and I'm talking about you, Councilmember Jones, and I'm definitely talking about you, Councilmember Wallace. We were here an hour and a half before you put your cards on the table, and you put them on the table out in the parking lot. That is what is inappropriate. Corporate power is at the heart, obviously, of what's at issue here. Councilmember Wallace, when I asked you specifically, how many people have complained, you said fifteen. And I said, identify them, and you said, I can't. And I said, well, okay, I said, has anybody put that to you in writing? You said, yes. I said, well, then I wanna copy. And then you said, well, if I can find it. That is sloppy leadership that goes to the corporate issue. If you, now, if you have a problem with the mayor, we spent an hour and a half as citizens.
Hold on, hold on.
We spent, and, and you weren't honest, and that's my frustration.
More than the same three minutes.
Is there a real reason for the charter to be amended? Or is it a problem with the corporate power? And Mayor, I'm gonna talk to you. If they wanna amend it, because they have a, oh, this is the only way that they can see to deal with your corporate power, then there's a problem with your leadership too. And I need you to all look at yourselves and stop wasting the citizens' time, okay? We have entrusted you with corporate power. I don't like dishonesty, I'm a lawyer. We are held to high ethics, but so are you. So, I would much rather you be honest and say, we got a problem with the mayor, and that's really why we wanna amend the charter. But Mayor, if they got a problem with you, then, then that is, is a commentary on your leadership, and you need to work with the council a whole lot better than you've been doing. These four-hour meetings are abusive to the citizens. No other community in this area. We are not the city of Houston. We are a small community of five thousand people. There is no way the corporate structure should be abusing the citizens. We've got too many things going on for y'all to be fighting, and for y'all to put workshops together when you really just wanna control the mayor, instead of getting the training that is appropriate and working with the mayor, so that y'all can really deal with what's going on in this community with regard to development, with regard to the exploitation of people, and I'm talking about students, and with regard to lack of infrastructure that needs to be here. All I want is honesty. I wasted an hour and a half of my time, got to the parking lot, had I not stayed here, I wouldn't have found out the ultimate reason for having these workshops.
And Councilman Jones? And Councilman Wallace?
Uh, I, I think earlier, it was addressed about, like, accusations. Uh, Dr. Brown, who was, who was there outside for me for at least an hour. I know Exante, uh, since I had took him home, he was sitting in the car. Um, we, and Mayor, me and you, publicly, privately, we've had our issues, but I wanna say, man, I think we addressed the issues, uh, thanks to even Councilman Wendy Mills. Um, and so, it says that, I was asking, what I said was that the mayor has too much power. Now, I didn't say nothing along those lines. I talked to Dr. Brown, I asked Dr. Brown upon how he had set up the committee and how the committee had worked. And matter of fact, Dr. Brown even went so far to end the conversation with, you can have my number, you know, how to call me, and we can contact. Nothing once came up in that brief discussion. Matter of fact, I remember you saying, uh, that you didn't like the fact that you stayed outside for an hour and thirty minutes, and then you had got the truth, 'cause even me and you had a fifteen-minute conversation. But within that fifteen minutes, nothing came up about the mayor, so please direct that. I, I didn't like that that was addressed towards me and the issues.
I said Wallace, sir. I said Councilman Wallace. I quoted the conversation that I had with Councilman Wallace.
That's okay, I was addressing, 'cause when I shook my head, you said, no, I'm talking about you, Councilman Jones, so that's why I just shook my head.
Y'all both had issues, but I specifically had the conversation that I quoted.
Yeah, Councilman Wallace has the floor.
Yes, thank you. So, first, I never said the mayor had too much power. That has never been on my mind strictly. I said the structure of the government, the structure of the, I have never.
You wouldn't say that under oath. You wouldn't say that under oath, because you gotta tell the truth. I'm not gonna play back. I got you, but let's, let's move on, because tell the truth here.
Okay, and I'm telling you, I never said the mayor had too much.
So, we, so, so, I, I, that is fine, uh, this is a workshop, but it's still a, 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 an organized meeting, and so, citizens will give their input, and they have three minutes on the topic. We're on page one, and if does, if someone else has their hand up about page one. Accusation is all that, we can say that if you want comments after. We're on page one. Does anybody have anything else before we go to page two? And you have three minutes, uh, this question.
Mine would be, uh, a few seconds.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a problem with the first sentence.
Okay.
We need more than verbal, uh, pronouncements that I live in Purview. If you notice the first sentence, it says, the inhabitants of the city of Purview, Water County, Texas, residing within corporate limits, there is no reason under the sun for you to consume. And I only, I hate Sadio didn't put hers in, in a motion, 'cause I was certainly seconded, because that's the underlying cause. It's allegations, jealousy, and as I said, uh, before, we need to get behind the mayor. He been here a little bit less than four years, and he's done more than any other mayor has done since they've been here.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to correct, you need to comply with the first sentence. You know you don't be able to consume all the time.
You know you don't be appearing to consume our time, and you're trying to make a, a raised umbrella for us to sit under, and I refuse. You don't, we need more than your verbal pronouncement that you live in purview. You think about that.
Yes, ma'am.
We need something notarized saying you live in purview, Texas, Walla County.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so, council, there's nothing, uh, um, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if we need to.
That's the amendment I want.
Does she need to know, know that he's here?
No, she knows.
All right, so, Councilman, we're on, um, uh, city charter, we're on page one, we're trying to get to a couple pages, but we're on one. We have one more question, and we're gonna go to page two, uh, that is, uh, Dr. Brown, um, and you have three minutes, Dr. Brown.
First of all, you can't limit the time that we have to speak after the fact. If there's a time limit on here, it needs to be.
This is an official meeting.
Don't, don't you dare interrupt me when I'm saying what you. This is what he does. This is what he does. You are just so out of order.
Yeah, but she's talking, and he won't let it get to three minutes. They called all of us out.
He called me out, he called me out.
Go ahead, so we can move to page two.
You, you need to get a.
Finish, finish, Dr. Brown.
First of, no, I'm not finished. First of all, you can't give a time limit on how long, uh, comments are in a workshop, that's not legal. I don't know why we don't have our attorney here once again today, because the citizens who were here last time specifically said, this is a legal document, and in order to make any kind of considerations for amendments or whatever, you need to have a legal authority here. Once again, we don't have a legal authority here. Uh, about the residents of the city, last time we were here, we gave you a whole list of input items that were important to the citizens. But as always, it seems like there are members of city council who wanna force or impose your personal goals, what you wanna do on us. Instead of taking input from the citizens, you force your agenda on us. We don't even have a list of things that you said, last time you said that were, uh, that were our input. So if you're having these workshops to get our input on it, we wanna at least hear what you heard last meeting on the input that we gave and what you plan to do with it. Otherwise, you're just forcing your agenda on us. It seems like Councilman Roland, we keep telling him over and over, we don't want this, but he keeps forcing it, shoving it, shoving it, shoving it. And that's not a good way to be a leader, a representative of these people who took time to be here. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Uh, my question was, is that, um, before we dived, dived in, cause I, I know last meeting, it was talking about structure, it was talking about serving, and it was talking about education, it was talking about leading as we are here today. Uh, so, we, we, we getting there slowly, but we want some type of structure to see where we're gonna go. My first question, though, is, uh, what's the direction? So, when we, when we talk about that, it's.